All right, folks, we're going to get started here. The Monday, May 8th, 2023 meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called order at 6:00 P. M. Please join us through the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Ottehway?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Here.
And Mayor Mayor?
Here. Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, that brings us on to the approval of the agenda. We have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion on this agenda? Commissioner Ottehway?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right. That brings us on to announcements. I don't have any for tonight. Which moves, moving on, we're going to have our first public comment session this evening. As a reminder to the public, public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address prior to your comment. And approach the center podium when you're ready.
Hi. Margaret from 404 East Magnetic Street, Marquette, Michigan. I wanted to make sure I got this out before everyone else spoke. Number one, you have an item on the agenda to sell property to a hotel developer. Personally, I don't think it's a good idea. There are many reasons why I don't think it's a good idea, but the bottom line is I pulled out a Kells Party Store, headed toward the lake, and realized at that intersection, I could see the lake. Once that hotel goes in, it'll be another blockade to seeing the lake. Now, is that dispositive? No, it's just a fact. You're going to block the view of the lake, and you know that. Secondly, for a little bit of education for those of you who did not grow up in Marquette, Michigan, that part of the shoreline is historically known as Bum's Jungle. The reason it was Bum's Jungle is when the railroads came through South Marquette, that's where the hobos jumped on and off the trains. And Bum's Jungle is where there's articles in the paper, there was at least forty to fifty gentlemen living there at any given time. It has not been a camp for Bum's Jungle ever since, but it has always been a place for people who cannot reach a public restroom to go into the woods and use the woods for that purpose. And in fact, as recently as the pandemic, there were issues with people, all the public restrooms were shut, and they were going to Bum's Jungle and going into the woods to defecate. I don't think you're going to change that behavior by having a fancy hotel put up there. I don't think you're going to change it because I don't think anything can change that behavior. So if you're going to sell this property to this developer, I'm absolutely sure Mr. Polzin can design ten to twelve excellent public restrooms, two of them ADA accessible, and make that part of the deal. And then, once they're built, the hotel supplies the utilities and the city supplies the cleaning. And we have a huge need for public restrooms on that side of town. And again, Bum's Jungle is always going to be there, one way or the other. And you could have a nice mural put up to make, welcome people to Marquette, and nobody has to know it's a public restroom. But I would strongly recommend that be part of the contract if you're going to make this deal. Secondly, dogs are out being walked, and there's a lot of off-leash dogs. I'm not letting go of this. I've been exploring a number of different options with this. I've gone so far as to get one of those batons that you press a button to extend so I can make sure that I can protect myself and my animal. But that's just for me. It's an ongoing concern, and it's not just in Marquette. So I'm going to be meeting with the city manager when she has time this week for my latest installation of how we can make this better. And third, there's a lot of people here tonight talking about fluoride in drinking water. I'm just saying this to the commission. There's not much you can do about it, so keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else for public comment this evening? Anyone? Okay.
I have a copy of something I wanted to be passed down to the commissioners. I'm Valerie Olson, 116 Hillcrest Trail. I'm coming once again to address the fluoride issue in light of the March 15th release of the National Toxicology Report. I just want you to, and I've sent it to all of you. I want you to understand that this is the highest level report that has ever been done. It's a federal agency. This is associated, affiliated, and part of the NIH. And the importance of this report is we have never had such a comprehensive report completed on fluoride. This is our highest toxic, toxicology agency. They were asked to review all the data present, the toxicity of fluoride. And the conclusion of the report was that there were fifty-five studies reviewed. Took six years for them to do this. This was an intensive review, scrutinizing the studies, making sure they were done properly. And the conclusion was, we are causing lowered IQ to our children to the tune of five points. That doesn't seem like a lot, but it's a very large impact. If you read the specs on the NTP report, you realize it's really a big, a very important conclusion. And then the other, when they were questioned, well, what if we lower the amount? They said, there is no safe amount that we can put into the water that will not put our children at risk, that will not put the unborn at risk. Because in a pregnant woman, the fluoride goes right into the fetus, to the brain of the fetus. It has nothing to filter it, the placenta doesn't. So we're putting children and the unborn at risk. So I ask you, since this is the highest level report that's ever been done, please do your due diligence. It's a federal report. You couldn't have a higher agency doing this. This supersedes anything a state agency might say, any, if that's who you're relying on for information. And understand, the EPA is now being sued in federal court. This is ongoing for their failure to prove safety before they told everyone to put it in the water supply. So you can go to fluoridealert.org and read all about the, the hearing that's going on now, the federal lawsuit. They have absolutely failed, and they put this off, the publication of the NTP report. They put it off for a whole year, hoping to delay the trial. So we've got real conflict of interest going on. Please, please, do your due diligence and put the children first. It comes above those who have conflict of interest. That includes the dental agencies, because they even tried to have the numbers shifted around. All this has come out in this federal court hearing. So please act on the best interests of our children. Please put a moratorium on this policy. We need our children to be safe. Thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me, everyone, please. Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment this evening? Feel free to approach, approach the podium.
I just, I just wanted to back up what Valerie just said.
Name and address, sir.
Ron Elber, I'm from Ishbeming. My children go to school in Marquette, so they drink the water. And really, all of us drink the water. If we go and buy pizza in Marquette, we have beer in Marquette or any other soft drinks or soup at the co-op. It all has the fluoride in it. And just to back up what Valerie said, so I think we all, the reason why the fluoride's going into the water is because we think it's in the best interest of the public. That's why, so I've had a conversation with Mark O'Neill, who is responsible for buying the fluoride. And, you know, he, that's why he's doing it. This all is on the recommendations of Eagle. It's a state agency that oversees, you know, all of the chemicals and water quality. So they're not aware of this report. So it came out in March. It's something new. Didn't sound like you were paying too much attention when Valerie was talking. So, I mean, do you, are you familiar with the report, or did you take down how to get a hold of it? Okay, oh, she gave you, okay. So, you know, it's, it's something that's going to be coming up again. You know, there's, you know, apparently it's, there's a lady, it's a contractor for Eagle, Sandy Sutton. And she, you know, she's the one that, kind of the fluoride expert. You know, she's not familiar with the report. I guess she, she mentioned something to, to Mark O'Neill that if a report was coming out, but it's been out. So it's just something where it's, it's really, you guys can help us by just, you know, cutting to the chase and just doing the research yourself and seeing it. So, because, and then, we can continue to do what's best interest for the public and for the kids. That's it.
Just wanted to give a reminder to the public that the commission's chance to respond is towards the end of the meeting's agenda under Commission Comments. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Hi. Brittany Saltman, 44 Neji in Nagani. Has anybody ever looked at their toothpaste or their mouthwash that has fluoride in it? It says, do not ingest. So I don't really understand why we're putting it in our water supply. I don't think that saving kids from a few cavities is worth the negative effects that fluoride has on our children, on our adults, on our unborn children. Fluoride has never been approved by the FDA for ingestion, but only for topical use, with a warning not to swallow toothpaste that contains this chemical. Right? There's many toothpastes that are made without fluoride. I mean, there's all kinds of different poisons and stuff we put in our food, but that's a different topic. But I think it's safe to say that everybody in this room wants what's best for the community and wants what's best for our children. So I'm just urging you to please do your research, listen to the community, and do what's in our best interest, taking the fluoride out of our water. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed. That brings us on to presentations. We have two this evening. The first one is the Michigan History Day finalist recognition for Rena, Rena Sager and Amber Shuregi. I hope I said that right. Okay. This is a presentation to recognize two Bothwell Middle School students, Rena and Amber, who won the Michigan History Day State Competition. The two students will be competing at the national competition later this year. The theme of this year's competition was Frontiers in History, People, Places, and Ideas. Rena and Amber won in the junior group performance category with their entry titled, "The Underground Railroad Was a Frontier of Freedom." If you both could meet me up at the side podium here. I have a little certificate for you, as well as get a photo for you. Can we give them both a round of applause, please? All right. And our second presentation is for the Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership, and our presenter is Tristan Luma.
Good evening. Before we start, just want to say a huge thank you for giving us the time again to address you, give you some updates about what we've been up to this past year. Going to run through, just kind of recapping our history in case anyone here isn't familiar, and then dive into some of the updates from this past year. So Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization devoted to supporting and maintaining international friendships with city Marquette sister cities of Higashiomi, Japan, and Kaayani, Finland. We're a pretty large eighteen-member active board. We have a few of my fellow board members here, want to point out a few in particular. Our very own Sally Davis, representing the city commission on our board. Thank you, Sally, for being part of it. And then also wanted to point out Paula Lindberg and Bill Brazier, both sit on the Michigan Chiga Sister State Boards, which I'll get into in a little bit. So first update, this is kind of a fun one. We decided it's time to modernize. It was time to kind of fix our look. So this past year, we've been working on a little bit of a rebrand. So these are our old logos. We'll still use them in some capacity, but we decided it was time to kind of come up with something a little more colorful, a little more bright. So that is our new logo designed by our own board member, Matt Hon, Hon, sorry, Honold. We also decided to build a new website. So the website's still in development, but there are a lot of good updates on there now. Excited to kind of have more of an online presence and modernize a little bit. So first stopping in the history of our sister city relationship with Higashiomi, Japan. In 1968, the state of Michigan Chiga prefecture in Japan entered a sister state relationship to build international goodwill and provide opportunities for cross-cultural engagement through annual delegation visits and outreach. About a decade later, city Marquette entered a formal sister city friendship with the town of Yokaiichi, now known as the city of Higashiomi, becoming the seventh city at the time to establish such a friendship. And to this day, we were one of fourteen in the state to share this kind of relationship. So, delegation visits, those went on hold during COVID. It's been very active alternating years where we'd send a delegation over there. They would come back to us the following year. That went on hold because of travel complications, but we're excited to report that we are planning on picking that back up next year. So this is going to start this fall. The sister, or sorry, the state of Michigan side of the sister state relationship is going to be sending a delegation with representatives from each of the sister cities within Michigan. We're sending five of our own. So really excited to kind of pick that friendship back up and starting next year, get back into this regular delegation visits back and forth. We're really excited to continue our student exchange. So we were able to send Chelsea Peterson, who was a student at Northern Michigan University, over to Michigan Universities, or sorry, Center for Michigan Universities in Higashiomi this past school year. She just finished up her semester, her whole year there. Said some really good things about it, so we're excited to kind of catch up with her when she gets back. In exchange, we got Amasaw Hayashi. He spent the year at Northern Michigan University. Seemed to have a great time. I think he just flew back this morning, right? So he's back on his way, but it was great getting to meet him through meetings and different events from this past year and hope to keep this friendship up. Wanted to shout out specifically Northern Michigan University International Studies, the Center for Michigan Universities in Higashiomi and the city of Higashiomi for their support in the student exchange. And our report on this last year, we were planning for it, but we were sending some art from Marquette to Japan. So we were contacted by an artist friend of ours who wanted to show some work that kind of highlights the Marquette area. So we put together a handful of pieces of art from local artists here, sent them over to Japan. They were on display from this past September through this past January. So really exciting to get the work. We kind of focus on local flora, fauna, landscapes, really what we thought represents Marquette and the U.P. as a whole. We're also honored to host the consulate general from Japan in Detroit. He visited last August. Some of you were in attendance there. We had a little welcome get-together at Peter White Public Library. He visited with officials from Northern Michigan University and the city. Just a good chance to build goodwill there. There's a couple of good photos from the shot. Probably see a lot of, a lot of familiar faces, including our own mayor. And we also got a certificate of recognition from the governor's office, which is really exciting. Now diving into our other sister city, Kaayani, Finland. This one started up in 1997. We became one of just twelve U.S. cities to share a partnership with a Finnish city, joining communities in Texas, California, Florida, and then right up the road in Hancock. So delegation visits have been on hold for a while. Both sides are interested in resparking this friendship. We're working on setting up a meeting between mayors right now, city representatives, to kind of build that friendship back up. Hope to send a delegation there, peacekeeping mission, just to kind of re-sign the friendship, reformalize it, and get back to regular delegation visits. But in the meantime, this past year, you may have heard or may have attended, we had a special celebration as part of the city of Marquette's Art Week at Lower Harbor Park. So we worked with the Marquette Symphony Orchestra, the city of Marquette Office of Arts and Culture. Superior Watershed Partnership was a part of it. And we had this really great concert featuring Finnish tunes, Finnish musicians from the area. Just a good way to kind of honor, it was honoring our twenty-five years of friendship with Kaayani, but also twenty-five years of the Marquette Symphony Orchestra's existence. So that was a wonderful time. Hope to do more of those kind of events in the future. Some more photos, some more familiar faces. Those are all the updates we have. Want to thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments? Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
I'll just make a quick comment. I've been, I was appointed to this committee when I first came on the commission about two and a half years ago. And I'm impressed because this group of people are so excited about these, this program and are so engaged in what's happening. And, you know, unfortunately, COVID, you know, interrupted a lot of our exchanges. And, and this fall, we're really looking forward to a goodwill exchange where five of our community members will be able to go over to Finland. But I've just, you know, these cultural exchanges may not seem like a big deal, but they are a big deal. And they really help to understand, help us to understand international relations. And thank you, Tristan, for a really nice update. And I'm hoping everybody participates in the Finnish Midsummer Celebration this summer.
Commissioner Smith?
I just wanted to echo Commissioner or Pro Tem Davis's gratitude. Thank you, Tristan, appreciate the updates. It was really special last summer when I was able to meet the consulate general of Japan and his wife. We had a nice dinner at the Veerling, and I made them walk down to Lake Superior to take some photos. And they didn't really believe me. They're like, why are we going down here? And then they saw the lake, like, oh my, yes! So we did a whole photo shoot. But I agree, Pro Tem Davis, with your take on the fact that it's really helpful to have those international relations and understand and honor other people's cultures and where they come from. And I think it makes things, you know, better and makes, makes us have a better idea of the world. So thank you for your work. Look forward to more events and things, and I'm hoping to get to go on a trip one of, one of these years. Might be a few years for me, but thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
And Tristan, I just want to thank you and the whole group for every, everything you guys do. It, I know, I've witnessed firsthand the amount of work and time that goes into these things. And I know we've been also trying to get that meeting of the mayors thing scheduled for quite some time now. It's a
Yeah, big time difference, a little tough.
Little difficult, the time differences, but I'm, I'm hoping we can still figure something out with it. But thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I think we're good.
All right. Commissioners, with that, that brings us to our consent agenda for the evening. Do we have a motion on consent? Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do we have a second on that? Commissioner Ottehway?
Second.
Any discussion?
Not for me.
None for me either.
All those in favor, please say yes. Yes?
Your honor, it's a roll call vote.
For what item?
Am I not in the, am I wrong?
No, you're correct. It's a roll call due to the ordinance on 3H.
City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ottehway?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis?
Yes.
And Mayor Mayor?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Moving on to our first new business item of the evening is Mayor Pro Tem Davis and Commissioner Hanley, travel reimbursement. City Clerk, if you could give us the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem Sally Davis and Commissioner Jessica Hanley attended the annual Michigan Municipal League Conference in Lansing, Michigan, April 18th to the 20th, 2023. The following checks will be reimbursed for travel expenses incurred. Mayor Pro Tem Sally Davis, check number 1007470, an amount of $590.14. And Commissioner Jessica Hanley, check number 1007455, in the amount of $590.14. Fiscal effect, total travel costs are $1,180.28. Adequate funds are available within the fiscal year 2023 city commission budget. Recommendation, approved travel reimbursement for Mayor Pro Tem Davis in the amount of $590.14, and Commissioner Hanley in the amount of $519.14 for the Michigan Municipal League Conference. Alternatives as determined by the commission. And your honor, I'll just note that the numbers in the original published version of this were skewed. There were two versions, so I laid out an updated copy if you're looking for a recommendation text.
I move that we, thank you. I saw you nod, so I thought we I move that we approve the travel reimbursement as outlined by our city clerk. If that will do, I'm looking for a nod. Thanks.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Larson?
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Hanley?
I just want to say I thank everyone for the chance to get to go to that event. It was amazing. We got a lot of time to work with our legislators, both from up here and down there. And I feel like we were able to hopefully put Marquette in the forefront in some of their minds when it comes to their upcoming bills.
Sure. You know, and I will echo that. These educational opportunities for commissioners are so very important. And this was an opportunity for us to learn about all of the legislation that has been passed and will be being worked on that will help the city of Marquette. It's also a chance to meet our legislators and, and become, and get up to date on a lot of the things that, that we need to address here at our city. So, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to do this, and I will be, I don't know if I can do this at this point, but I am ruckusing myself from the vote, since it has a financial gain for me.
Suzanne, could I? Is, is that correct? Before I ask for a vote?
It can be. Interestingly, I was looking at this in Robert's Rules late last week. And interestingly, Robert's Rules don't require anyone to abstain. You just simply don't vote. Certainly, you can abstain if you want to, but the rules don't require it. If you don't vote, it's just treated as if you abstained, without actually taking a separate vote of abstention. I did not know that until last week, so. I did not know that until last week, so.
So now we're all educated and I will abstain.
Are we good? Okay. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. All right, that brings us to item five, proclamation for National Public Works Week. City clerk, take it away.
Thank you, mayor. So the proclamation, there's no background, but I will read the proclamation, which states, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Marquette, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas the hard work, dedication and professionalism of public works professionals deserve recognition and appreciation, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the city of Marquette to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, the mayor and city commission of the city of Marquette hereby designate the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week and urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association, government agencies, in paying tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and quality of life, dated this 8th day of May, 2023, and signed Cody Mayer, mayor of the city of Marquette.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we adopt this proclamation as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second on that? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that.
Any discussion?
Just to say that I'm very excited that we get to celebrate the amazing people who helped keep our city going all the time, and I think we should celebrate them even more than one week.
Anyone else? City manager, did you want to give a shout out or anything?
If you don't mind, I think it's just important to note, and I think it's fresh in our minds right now, not only do these, these individuals work hard every day, but especially in extreme weather events that we've seen recently and especially this past week, I don't think it's really news to anybody that this was not a routine snowstorm. And this snowstorm was incredibly different. I don't even want to call it a snowstorm because it's, it was much more than just snow. And this group really includes public works, but especially also, that does include our wastewater treatment plant operators and those at the water filtration plant as well. This was a storm that required all of these staff members to think swiftly and strategically for two days straight. I think that many of us did not see some of that damage because we were safe at home, warm and cozy, but if you were able to see what Lake Shore Boulevard looked like, there was a flowing river down the bike path. And I do have some pictures that I shared with the commission on that one. On top of that, there were other areas that had potential flooding and was mitigated because of the quick thinking and strategic thinking that our staff had done and were able to really adapt for that in order to keep things going for the rest of the city. Just a couple of other things too. While you saw snowplows going out there, you actually had the snow plowing stop and had our crews refocus on clearing those stormwater gutters that had come compacted with snow and ice and other debris that had washed up during some of the, the minor flooding, and get those drains cleared so that it would keep it out of those other areas and getting into our sewer system, which was going into the plan overwhelming our plant. Our wastewater treatment plant saw record high levels of flow come in due to this extreme weather and this, this water coming in, which required us to have staffing 24 hours a day at the wastewater treatment plant, and we still have staffing 24 hours a day there right now because of the increasing levels with the Carp River. Everything is operating well and efficiently because of the quick thinking and expertise of these individuals that are working for us, and I cannot be prouder of the efforts that they put in and the time they put in. It was really a rally for them to get this, this storm under control, but then to get it cleaned up without anybody really knowing how much damage really had happened and how much damage they prevented. And then on top of that, after the storm had cleared Wednesday afternoon, when it was nice and a little bit calmer, the crews worked even harder to clear out the Prescott Isle Loop for everybody to enjoy this weekend. And you would not have known some of the issues that they had out there on the island. So this proclamation is just a piece of paper, it looks like, but it means so much more for us to honor them today and for that special week for them to be recognized. So thank you for that opportunity to explain.
Thank you for sharing that. All right. First and a second, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, and that brings us to our final new business item of the evening, resolution of intent to sell city property at 601 South Lake Shore Boulevard. This will require a roll call vote. City clerk, if you could give us the background, please?
Thank you, mayor. The city received offers to purchase the city-owned parcel of land located at 601 South Lake Shore Boulevard from the following parties. Marquette Opportunity LLC, received on April 5th, 2022, with reaffirmed interest in January of 2023. ABROS, received November 21st, 2022, and the MCFCU on January 25th, 2023. These proposals were consistent with the Community Master Plan Future Land Use Map and consistent with the redevelopment ready's, community's certified city economic development plan goal of improving and diversifying the tax base. The city manager, assistant city manager and community development director conducted interviews with the firms on April 4th, 2023. As a result of the evaluation process, the city manager is recommending the city commission adopt the attached resolution of intent to sell, which will permit the city manager to negotiate a potential sale of the property with Marquette Opportunity LLC. Their intent for use of the property is the development and establishment of a hotel that will, one, provide for an additional 28 to 30 FTE jobs, 22 of which are full-time; two, utilize one proven management group from the existing hotel; and three, provide approximately $18 million of taxable investment in the property. The firm has also agreed to work with the city with regard to maintaining an appropriate buffer from the existing bike path, as well as to provide community green space as an additional buffer that will be maintained by their firm. Additional details, such as building height and placement, are governed by the city zoning ordinance and will be the responsibility of the city planning commission in accordance with the land development code upon an appropriate rezoning of the property, which is currently zoned municipal. Fiscal effect, the city will realize tax revenue annually from the property upon buildout and will receive a negotiated payment for the land. Recommendation, adopt the attached resolution of intent to sell and direct the city manager to negotiate a sale of the property to Marquette Opportunity LLC, subject to city commission approval per the municipal property sales ordinance. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Otte?
I move to adopt the attached resolution of intent to sell and direct the city manager to negotiate a sale of the property to Marquette Opportunity LLC, subject to city commission approval per the municipality property sales ordinance.
Okay. And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, I will second the motion.
Commissioner Otte?
So this obviously has been ongoing for a while. I have, get a lot of comments, concerns, like a lot of the public. I guess as we kind of move into this, we do have Mr. Paulson here. Are we going to allow him to have some?
If the commission would like, I can give him.
I would love that before I actually have comment.
Okay. Mr. Paulson, would you mind?
Jerry Paulson, architect for the group. Yeah, we're looking at developing another hotel on the property, and it really is, the way that property is shaped, it's very dominated by all the easements that run across it, number one. And then the bulk of the building that we were proposing to build would actually kind of be behind the stuff you see on Front Street. So in contrary to what Margaret suggested, as you look down, crossing the, at the light there, heading into Founder's Landing, that, we're leaving that wide open. I mean, I really, of all the projects we've done down in the harbor, we have always left that street view open on Barraga and on Fisher, and now again at that intersection. So that's really, really important, and that's, this group is really dedicated to that too. They own the Fairfield, be adding on to the Fairfield, and then this would come later, another hotel across the street. If you look at what hotels do for a community, a lot of people are against hotels, but they bring in dollars every day, and in the summer, they're bringing in huge amounts of money. And the downtown restaurants, the, all the businesses in Marquette benefit from hotels. And tourists are bad, ugly people. They, they come and they love, they, they're amazed at how beautiful Marquette is and they respect Marquette. So this is good for the community, and it's really why, why I personally get involved in these projects, because I like what we're doing. It is enhancing this harbor. When I grew up in, I remember Bum's Jungle. I was afraid to go down there as a North Marquette kid. You never went down to the South Marquette or Bum's Jungle. So this, this is enhancements for the community and it's tax-based for the community. Any, any questions that you have, I'll certainly.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, I, I think we have a visual that we can put up on the screen showing the notional idea of where the hotel may be.
I'm looking at staff if we can, thank you.
I can bring that up for you.
Mr. Paulson, that may help you in describing the placement notionally of where the property could be and the considerations you may have looked at in terms of how to develop that property, again, notionally, understanding that it's got to go through a considerable period of examination.
That's right, that's right. First, you know, can we, can we actually use the property? So the, the little bent shape you see there is really pinned in by the easements across the property. One of the biggest power lines that runs out of the former power plant runs through the property, the main sewer line from the city of Marquette runs through the property, and that defines where we can build and where we can't. It was really important to, with the group, to, to keep that public view corridor open and in fact, actually create a public space kind of down into Founder's Landing here. So we have other spots along Founder's Landing and the Lower Harbor where lots of public spaces. This is yet another one, and this is what we're referring to, is that this is something the hotel people will develop and maintain. So, and what that design is, it's wide open. This will be a public input process. It'll be on city property, so we'll, we'll take input in any way you would like us to. You can kind of see that the way the, the hotel buildings across the street follow Lake Shore Boulevard and create that shape. So I was trying to kind of echo that in this new hotel, which actually sort of forms a little, little point where you pass through as you come into Founder's Landing, and you can see the way they angle, it opens up the view. So, you know, it's a nice presentation of the, the lake as you head into Founder's Landing. So also up at the Front Street intersection, we've already proposed this across the street for the addition. We're creating a large rain garden there, handle some of our stormwater, but create a nice landscaped kind of buffer. We'll do the same thing on the, the south side of the intersection so that you have a nice soft entry going into Founder's Landing as well. So we've talked, most of the parking behind, again, you've got the auto repair, the donut shop, all those buildings sort of blocking a lot of the, the impact that this may have, but visually it's, it's very hidden, so. So, yeah, we're open. We need some public restrooms. The hotel is wide open, right?
Anyone else in the commission have questions? Mayor Protem Davis?
The last time we talked about this, you know, I expressed concerns over the distance to the bike path and the elevation, and I, you know, I, I've noticed that that piece of property is actually at a higher level than what the Fairfield currently is now. So I know that, that code is three stories, but I, I am concerned about the elevation. So start by talking, tell me how, how much space is between the bike path and that red line there where it defines the property?
That's 30 feet from the edge of the bike path to the property line. So, yeah, we really, you know, wanted to have that buffer and again, we were sort of penned in, but we picked that line because currently there is no property line there. So, but we said, let's give it, you know, basically a 60-foot right-of-way, what you would give for a street almost for a bike path, so.
Okay. And then talk to me about the elevation. Will it be, will it end up being higher than the Fairfield is now because of the kind of soil that is in that property and what will need to be done to build?
Well, first of all, the, the first floor line of this will be very, almost the same, maybe just a bit lower than the Fairfield, and we have decided that we'll, we'll limit it to three stories. Now depending on the rezoning, it could actually be four, but we're saying, committing to three stories to keep that, keep that down. And, you know, we're not going to build the site up. There, there is contamination in the ground, much like across the street, and so the new, we don't really remove materials anymore now, we just protect people's having exposure to them. So the Fairfield has a complete ventilation system under the slabs to pick up soil gases that may be contaminated, so we'll have something similar, but we're not hauling dirt in or hauling dirt away.
So, okay, so I'm, I'm, I don't know construction, but I'm baffled by how that would be lower because I think it's now a little higher than the base of the Fairfield. Oh, thank you, Dennis.
It, it appears to be a little bit higher now because when we did East Barraga Avenue, all of the soil that we took from East Barraga Avenue was temporarily stored on that site. So when they go in and do their environmental work, most likely what's going to happen is a lot of that is going to come out and get moved someplace else.
The other thing that occurs is, as you come down Lake Shore Boulevard, you know, you're up higher and you, you keep dropping all the way down until you get to Games Rock. So, and there's a steady decline, and so when you're in the front of the Fairfield, Fairfield appears to be really high, but it's really just at that level of Lake Shore Boulevard at the intersection, so. And that, the Fairfield was constructed on the grade that the city created, and so when that property was purchased, we didn't change the grade whatsoever, even though there's often misunderstandings of that, we did not. And so, again, we're trying to have a comparable grade, which is already exists across the street.
Okay, so now I have to ask, Dennis, when you talked about the Barragan Avenue, there's two dirt piles there right now. Is that what you're referring to? Are you referring to the, the field that was put there several years ago and then capped?
The, there's a couple of piles there now, but even previously to that, when we did the work with DEQ up on the northern site or the, what is now One Marquette Place, a lot of that ended up on that site and was kind of leveled out back when it was Superior Stop Property.
So that will be removed?
I can't speak for the developer, but that's how, that's how it got there.
Again, the intention is not to be removing materials, it's just to be protecting exposure to them, so.
Okay. And could you talk to me a little bit about entrance and traffic at that area? Entrance and exit to the parking lots and traffic?
Yeah, what we've, what we're proposing is to actually continue on what was included in the Fairfield addition. In that site plan review, we added in another lane, a wider lane coming in off of Front Street, so that there's more room to create a left-hand turn lane, so people coming into the Lakeshore or into the Fairfield. This will extend that even further so that we have, you know, we have a center turning lane, so no matter which direction you're coming from, you could turn into either hotel. We did place the driveways across from each other to kind of concentrate that, but there's, there's still room for the flow of traffic coming off of Front Street and then leading up to Front Street.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just to be clear in my mind, Mr. Paulson, as I'm looking down on that picture where it says public view, that is leading to the lake, and that property is still public property?
Yes.
Can you point out or would you describe where the brake line would be between the private property that would belong to the hotel versus the public property?
It, it's the, the red dash line that you see on that drawing, so it sort of parallels Lake Shore Boulevard as a, like a right-of-way wood as you come down off of the intersection. And then, and then, see, we've, this was something the city had put together, but we've, we've nipped that corner off for that public plaza too, so we're not taking as much of the public property.
Well, I did want to make sure people understood that property we're working with and we're looking at, and particularly the industrial application of it to the south, to the east rather, between the donut shop-
to the east, rather, between the donut shop and the auto collision repair, et cetera. Thank you.
That's right.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm not opposed to development, but I am opposed to development on the lake. So, I just wanted, you know, I voted for many, many projects. I've supported Barry. I think that he does fine work. This isn't any indication of that. This, this location is what is my issue. We have had a longstanding promise to the public as multiple generations of city commission of not building on this side of the lake. And I, for one, am not willing to sell our Lakeshore, no matter how tough our budget problem is. I think that this will fundamentally change the character of Marquette, and I think it's one baby step down a long road of baby steps. I think we've got to take a long, hard look in the mirror before we approve this one, guys, because there's no going back from it once we start down this road. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. I just, I kind of want to piggyback on that. I also have supported a lot of projects that we've done in the area, but I do not think, based on the people that I've reached out to me and the comments that I've got, that this is the appropriate use for this land. I have not had a single constituent reach out in favor of this, and I think that speaks volumes about what people want with our Lakeshore. And I don't think that this is it.
Commissioner Otway?
Yeah, really, we have Dennis here, and I would say, out of everyone in the room, he's probably the expert on that property. I'd really love to hear him just kind of describe, if he would, a little bit about the history of that property and kind of the city's work that's went into that, to have them bring this to us today as their recommendation.
The history is pretty deep and industrial. It was part of a former rail yard and tank farm. It was blighted. The city, moving to the more recent past, acquired that property in 1999, 2000 timeframe. It was part of the Wisconsin Central purchase, which included the, that, South Rail Yards is what it was called. It also included what we now know as our linear park and the property where the Beacon House and the U.P. Health System Marquette lie. The overall purchase price of the property, I think back then, was about $2.1 million in $1999. We worked with MDEQ prior to planning the property to go out and do some investigation on the soil, at which time we had come up with a due care plan or due care obligation for that site. We did several community planning exercises that started with Pat Coleman, U.P. Engineers and Architects, did a South Rail Yard plan that turned into a community master planning effort in 2002 through 2003 into 2004, which also included a Lower Harbor Plan, separate planning exercise that the community went through that identified what was called a framework plan for the different uses that could be down there. And it was off of the framework plan that we identified these particular parcels for development, and this was one of them. Again, that framework plan didn't necessarily pick, this is going to be a Jimmy John's or a, you know, whatever it is, but four, actually, three distinct parcels at the time were developed in that framework plan. The one where One Marquette Place and the hotel are now, I believe, for some reason, was parcel two. Parcel one was where the Gaines Rock Town Homes, and I don't remember the name of all the developments there now, on down through the Fairfield, was the original parcel one of Founder's Landing. And then, we had this parcel as well that was identified in the framework plan for some form of development. When we originally marketed the property, this one was honestly, it was included in it at the time when the original Founder's Landing sale went. We had several groups that had applied, and then we ended up with the Founder's Landing Group. Their primary focus at the time was parcel one, and then moving on to the other parcels from time to time. They eventually acquired parcel two, and then we had a remaining parcel of what we called 2A or whatnot that we ended up selling to a separate development group because of the way the, the development and the economy's worked, which left us with eventually this parcel that we have now. That's about the best I can do. Barry, did I miss anything? Because you were with me the entire way.
It's been a long time.
If I could just add to that, you know, when we were going out for RFPs on the parcel two that Dennis just described, that is currently, you know, built on by the Gaines Rock and Fairfield, this was kind of in there as almost an appendix to it, like this is also available for purchase. We didn't actually list it as its own parcel. And part of that, part of that reason is, you can see that easement running right through the middle of it that makes it pretty difficult to develop of many different uses. And the amount of contamination we were, this is probably one of the more contaminated pieces on the site. So, the work we've done developing Founder's Landing to this point, making it, you know, a viable tax base and, you know, promoting economic development in that area, has brought us to the point where an encumbered parcel with significant environmental contamination is now a valuable piece of property and something that can be turned into tax revenue to support city operations and relieve the liability on our tax-paying citizens.
And it completes the original framework plan?
Yes.
I think that's...
Absolutely.
The point that I was trying to make is that this would complete the original framework plan for identifying those parcels, of course, unless the commission decided otherwise.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, let me just slide in behind our experts over here. If we went back two generations before you were talking, that was all very heavy industrial property. That was the rolling mill dock in there, the rolling mill steel dock in there, and another freight unloading operation. There were something like at least 12 at any given time charcoal blast furnaces that were working that property. This is well before the railroad came. This was heavy-duty industrial. I like to tell folks, this is where the Industrial Revolution began, Marquette, and it truly did. So, if you have visions of any way that this was a beautiful, pristine, wonderful wilderness, forget it. It wasn't since the city began. So, what we've been able to do with that property, I think, has been magnificent, and hopefully we have one more step to take. But thank you for your time, your honor.
Commissioner Otway?
So, you know, I just want to point out a couple of things. First off, thank you, Dennis, for, and Sean both, for the feedback on that. I really appreciate the work that has went into this land, this property, this, everything that's been done as far as trying to really find a, kind of a use for this property, even everything that the city manager has done. Ultimately, when we're looking at this as a commission and we're discussing things, I think there's two different thoughts here. One is this leg front property. Some of us think it is. I do not. And I think other commissioners feel the same way, but I can understand why some commissioners don't feel that way. I view this myself as highway property, and I believe that this is really the best use of this property. Ultimately, if we're going to get smart about economic development in the city of Marquette, the first thing we have to do is stop letting businesses leave the city and build in the township. We have a need for hotels here. We really do. This side of town really could use this type of development, really to maybe bring it up to a nicer standard and possibly bring some, some businesses to that area that maybe wouldn't have thought about being there in the first place. I really, you know, appreciate everything that the developers, you know, have thought here to, to remember what the lake view is, to kind of, you know, do as much as they possibly can and maximize the potential of that space to allow the public to still be involved. I don't know that we're ever going to find a better situation as far as a sale, you know, and because of that, I fully support this. The one caveat I will say is, I would love to hear Sean before we vote, have a discussion about Brownfield.
Sean, if you wouldn't mind?
Absolutely. So, this parcel is technically within the Founder's Landing Brownfield footprint. It is our intention to amend the Founder's Landing Brownfield plan to just snip it off, because it doesn't contribute to the taxable, to the TIF currently. Our consultant has told us it would be a pretty straightforward amendment, and I have not pursued that to this point, because I have been waiting for direction from the city commission on the future of this property. It's a significant amount of work to do that. The developer has indicated that they are not interested in utilizing a TIF subsidy, nor do I feel that this commission has an appetite for, you know, providing that. So, if the commission does choose to move forward to sell this property tonight, it would be my intention to time the Brownfield Plan Amendment Public Hearing with the final vote on the sale of the property. So, no, no Brownfield is the goal for this property.
And Sean, if I could ask for clarification with that, or just a simplification even too. So, any remediation that has to happen on the site, the developer's going to pay for themselves?
Correct. Correct.
That is still something that has to be addressed in negotiations as well.
Yeah. It might affect pricing, that kind of activity. But I think the real point there is that any development and taxable value generated from that will go straight into the City General Fund and not be captured by the Founder's Brownfield TIF.
Thank you. Mayor Portem Davis?
I will take it as long as Commissioner Larson doesn't have comments first.
You can, you can comment.
Okay. You know, I've had a lot of community input on this, and it's, it's on both sides. You know, some people want to sell it and develop it, and others don't want us to touch the Lakeshore, just as Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Hanley talked about. And, you know, that disagreement among the community members I've talked to really makes it a difficult decision for me. You know, those who favor development talk about the need for tax base and, and how it could potentially improve the look of that corner. And I don't disagree with that. I think the plan that is up there, the drawings that are up there is, is very attractive. And really, I appreciate that some of the concerns that the commission has had in the past have been addressed to the best that they can. You know, and I've also received a lot of comments against this sale, and mostly expressed about development along the Lakeshore. And I have mixed feelings about this property. I think some of it is business development along that, that highway, and others, the other part of it is along the Lakeshore. So, mine is kind of a mix as opposed to what Commissioner Otway is saying. Because I've struggled over this decision, I watched some videos of our previous meetings. And I just want to remind people, we had a special meeting last June 15th to discuss available parcels of land that we could sell. And at this meeting, we voted six to zero to not sell this parcel for the development of this particular hotel. Just think about that. And of course, our commission looks different. Tonight, it looks different. We have two new commissioners, and one of our current commissioners was not at that meeting, so the vote could be very different tonight. You know, and then we had another discussion on February 15th, which wasn't very long ago, and that's when we talked again about selling this property. And the, and I have to read this, because the vote was to affirm an interest in selling the property for additional tax base and direct the city manager to make a recommendation. And the city manager and her staff have done exactly what we asked them to do. That vote was six to one, and I was one of those people that voted for it. You know, and my comments that night expressed the need to proceed with caution and respect for what the community members are telling us about development. You know, and you already heard some of my concerns, the bike path, the elevation, the traffic. You know, but I envisioned a development closer to Front Street that would look a lot like the other commercial businesses that are there. And I also understand that the easements and the, the design of the property, that couldn't happen. I didn't know that at the time. But I envisioned a building that would match the elevation of, of the properties that were south, which would be like the Quality Car Care and the bakery. You know, and though our city budget is very, very tight at this point, you know, we'll be in a better position in a few years. So, I'm a little concerned that this might be a little short-sighted for, if we're looking for a quick tax base, and, and, you know, maybe if we just give that a couple of years, we'll be in that better position. And then, finally, on that February 13th meeting, the city staff talked about the negotiations and how we could negotiate more buffers with the bike path and the buffers with the elevation. And, you know, and I just would, if, if this vote goes through tonight, I would hope that we are very considerate of that, of those negotiations, and that there's some assurance that, that what we're seeing here tonight does not look real different than what the actual development ends up becoming. Thank you.
Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, just to weigh in. You know, I do think that there has been a thorough evaluation of the site. It's taken into account a number of our previous plans, economic development goals of the city, as well as some of the future land, land use considerations, you know, for that site. Taking a look at it, there's still public access, from my view, to the lake. You have the bike path. You do have some, some 30-foot buffers that are in place. I do, you know, as far as coming from the planning commission, some of the work that we've done there, height has certainly always been an issue as far as that goes. And so, if, if it can match and be no taller than the, you know, the hotels right next door, I mean, I think that would be something that certainly should be in consideration as far as those, those items go. I don't know that I see a big difference between the hotels across the street and, you know, just a street in between the two, you know, from my point of view on, you know, the differences in development, on why the parcel that's right behind, you know, the, the car shop, you know, is different than, you know, right across the street. So, I do think that this, this is a reasonable use of that property. And, you know, with contamination and otherwise, I don't know that a residential facility would be, you know, the move to make there. There potentially is some remediation that could be done. But I think there'd be equally, potentially opposition against, against that, you know, having families and folks that, you know, might be living on that site, you know, year-round, if it were to be residence. So, as far as that goes, I do think they do a good job. They're willing to work with the city, maintain a public view shed, put in a little, some park, as well as limit, you know, he said it could be four stories, you know, potentially after rezoning, and actually limiting that height somewhat is a developer that's willing to, willing to work with, you know, the city. And I believe that's an important thing that we should be taking into consideration, you know, here as well.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your honor, just a few points to bear in mind. It's my, or rather, my, I believe in, in talking with city staff, they had done some preliminary tax numbers, and I believe that we're looking at $70,000 a year that goes directly to the city of Marquette for the property, give or take. Now, that's important. I don't know how to say that other than say, guys, we just raised your taxes to the highest possible point we can. And we now have a viable piece of property that can return a significant amount of annual income to the city of Marquette that we know over time will grow and improve. And I got to look you in the eye and say, I'm sorry, guys, I can't do that. I can't sell that property. You've got to let your taxes continue to rise. And that's, that's just not consumable. We have to look at the economic health of the city of Marquette in all aspects. And $70,000 is not going to be a terrific amount of money. It is not. But it is a consistent and important amount of money that we need to plan against. Now, think of all the great things that we did with DPW. Somebody paid for that. Somewhere that money is coming for that storm and the overtime, et cetera, et cetera. And that's city tax base. And this is an example of that, of a relatively painless way to acquire it, to manage it for the best and benefit use of the city of Marquette. I would point out one other thing. Bum's Jungle was no paradise. It was crime, drug-related, alcohol-related place for, I guess I'll just say, misfits. To look back on that with nostalgia, you've got to change your vision a little bit, I think, because that is not an accolade that we want this city to have or want to build on. We're not going to do something with a piece of property because it used to be Bum's Jungle. That's not the way we should be looking at life. Thank you, your honor.
Commissioner Smith?
I'll be brief. I can see where the way the tide is going, and I, for one, am, I always, I'm going to vote no, but I will... always, I'm going to vote no, but I will always support what the commission decides. And it seems like this is going to end up passing. If it passes, I will support it. We've got a long, honored tradition here on the City Commission of what the commission decides. That is the vote of the public, and that's what we get behind and support. So, I just want to say that. But in that same breath, as we're talking about negotiations, I just want to put on record that I'm hopeful that we can keep the trees that are on the lake shore intact. I know that they were thinned on the properties to the right, if we're looking at the map, and I want to make sure that that is not any part of an arrangement on or off books. Thank you.
I'm going to just comment now. You know, this, I hope the public in attendance, as well as watching at home, can tell that there's a, it's a little bit of a tricky one for the commission here. And you know, when I look at this, I had a hard time with kind of just thinking about it when we first discussed it. And in my mind, I didn't think, I didn't see it as part of the lake shore. I suppose depending how you build the building, you could certainly start getting into more dangerous territory in that regard. But I'm really hoping that moving forward with that, we can try to preserve and protect that as much as possible. I'm glad to know that we are going to have the buffer there for the bike path as well. The fact, though, that this is a highly contaminated spot, and historically has been, and we're not talking about a brownfield right now, I think is impressive. The fact we're talking about putting tax dollars back to our tax base, so we can continue to work on the progress of hopefully lowering people's taxes again, makes me optimistic with this. And much to Commissioner Otteway's point, I think this will have economic benefit to that entire area. But I still understand the argument that it, I get it. It's a weird spot for development to begin with. It doesn't help that the name that it would be on says Lake Shore Boulevard. I envisioned it being on the highway there. I don't know. I have been, I've tried my best to be transparent with this. I went out in the middle of winter and gave an interview on the site, just so folks could see where it was. It was kind of freezing, but it's all right. Yeah, that's just kind of my thoughts with this. I frankly didn't hear much from the public as far as telling me not to support this. We had a development we voted on very recently that I got a lot more feedback from the public on, and I did not get that kind of level of opposition from the public with this. And I try my best to genuinely listen to all those comments and take them in, but I did not hear that level of opposition here. So, I am frankly going to be voting in favor of this, but that's just where my head's at. Commissioner Smith?
You know I don't talk a lot. I'm sorry, guys. I just want to say that I was the no vote on February 13th, and I heard from dozens of people thanking me for voting no. I just wanted to put that on record. Residents, not just people, people who live here.
Anything else from the commission? Commissioner Stonehouse?
No, nothing, thank you, Your Honor.
All right. City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hanley?
No.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Otteway?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis?
No.
Mayor, Mayor?
Yes. Motion passes four to three. All right. And with that, that brings us to our second public comment session of the evening. As a reminder, public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I'm very rarely misunderstood, because I tend to speak in blunt terms. But I just had my statement about Bum's Jungle referred to as nostalgia, and it was the opposite of that, sir. The point I was making to people, and I'm going to use an analogy here, which is probably not fair, but if you have an animal that's used to eliminating in a certain part of the yard or the certain part of your walk, they're going to continue to eliminate there because that's where they're comfortable. I'm not speaking facetiously here, but I don't believe the building of anything in this property is going to stop the historical use of that area as a relief station for people who have no place else to go. That's what I meant, not nostalgia. I have no nostalgia about the phrase Bum's Jungle. It was not a high point in the development of the city. Number two, now that you're going to do it, I was pleased that it was a four to three. I'm disappointed in Commissioner Larson and Commissioner Otteway, but that doesn't mean that it's not been discussed and debated, and a decision was made. And this is what happens when people do not speak. And no matter how much you post on Facebook or tell them something could happen when they don't show up, many times the results will not be what they want. There's nothing you can do about that. Number three, this decision, along with the decision to support the Vault project, for the future of Lake Shore Boulevard, it's been ruined for the next one to three years and the idea of being a transportation conduit. I don't say that casually. The Vault people said two and a half years, the corner of Lake Shore Boulevard in Washington would be affected. I believe that's a reasonable estimation based on what they're doing. You now are talking about the end of Lake Shore Boulevard and construction going on there. So, essentially, part of the collateral damage of this decision is wherever you end up with this project, you're going to take Lake Shore Boulevard away from the tourists and the residents for upwards of two years, if not two and a half. And I don't personally believe for a second that the issue of the contamination is going to be dealt with as calmly as everybody's dealing with it, because Bum's Jungle was the worst of the worst of the worst of that part. So, these are considerations that you listened to, you paid attention to, and you voted on. And I'm very pleased that the vote was so close. It enabled people to see where you're coming from and what's important to you. I lived through four or five years of votes that were 7-0 and 6-0, and it seemed like it was decided before you got here, and this was not one of those. And I would encourage Barry Polson to present his plans for multi-use public restrooms that will be added on in a convenient space as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening. Orville Lishnow, 1802 Kimber, Marquette. I want to thank the commissioners who supported this. I've been here before harping on this, so I didn't get up earlier at the first comment session, because you heard me before. But, you know, we just had another election. Good cause, but that put another $150 on my tax bill. So, you know, and the city just put some before that. So, that's why I've been up here. Let's do something about this city property, get on tax rules. Look at Lake Shore Boulevard. Look down there. We have a couple hotels there. We've got the condos. My goodness, there's not much there in the way of Lake Shore anymore. If an area was ever suited for another hotel, that was probably it. But, and then look in Lake Shore Boulevard. Look what we have, all the way from Salt Beach north. We have a terrific area there now. And, you know, the more property we get, the city buys, we have to maintain that property. And you're talking about tax dollars. Well, somebody has to pay the employees. Karen just mentioned about the terrific job that was done by Public Works. At some point, we're going to run out of people out there, because we continue to purchase this property, and it has to be maintained. God only knows. We have a terrific park system, press Kyle the Jim out there, but it has to be maintained. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none, public comment is now closed. That brings us to comments from the commission. Going to start things off with Commissioner Larson.
I think, so, thanks for that. So, it's a tough meeting, tough meeting tonight, a little bit more, this is the first, the first meeting that I've been on that has had a little bit more contention than we've moved forward. But I think each of us has our own convictions and our own work that we put into it to kind of understand the best path forward for this most recent piece of property here. So, I hope we can work together as a commission, and I hope our city staff can work to faithfully negotiate terms that are most beneficial to the city and to the interests that the citizens have moving forward. So, thank you.
Commissioner Otteway?
I have a few points. You know, since I've been appointed, the number one thing I have heard from residents is do something to make our taxes go down. Do something to make it affordable to live here. And every time there's a task from city staff to do that, there's always contention with that, right? Because it's selling property, it's raising parking meter costs, it's doing things that makes nobody happy. My point with that is government's tough, right? We have a huge staff that works here, and our staff, you know, they're very, well, I'll say it, they're very underpaid. I want to make sure we can do everything as a commission. It's possible to support them. And it kind of goes back into doing what we can do for the people that live here also. Everyone pays a lot of taxes. Marquette's a very expensive place, and we need to do as much as we possibly can to take the burden off of people. The other thing I want to point out is, you know, I fully respect the, my colleagues here that voted no on this. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Hanley, Mayor Protem Davis, they are very well thought in all of this. And this wasn't an easy decision for any of us. We all care about the same things. And I think that this group of commissioners we have, I like to think we very much respect each other, and I respect your opinions on this. This is something that, as kind of my view from the community, how it worked out, was very split in the community also. So, that's why it's very split here. But I do think that from city manager on down, there were very great discussions, and I applaud the commission, I applaud the city manager, I applaud city staff for really working through this and getting it to an outcome. It may not be the outcome that everyone wanted, but it is an outcome nonetheless, as opposed to pushing it off until another date. That's all I have to say.
Mayor Protem Davis?
I have nothing further this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I would just echo, I was going to say the same thing, Commissioner Otteway, that I think this vote demonstrates what the views of our residents are on this kind of a topic. It's not an easy decision. And again, I will support the project, even though I did vote no, but I'm happy to see it be successful, and whatever we can do to work together to make that space accessible to those that want to use it, that are paying, helping shoulder our tax burden, you know, the tourists, and to the public as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just a couple of quick hits, if I can. We had a hard decision tonight. Haven't had one this hard in a while. But I think what you've seen is everybody look at it, make their consideration, make the best use of their time and their analysis effort to come up with a reason why they are going to vote left or right or up or down. And I think as Commissioner Smith has said, we now support the decision, and we go forward, and we'll wrestle with another one in the next two weeks. That's what we're here for. That's what we try to do. Let me just shift gears for a second to the snow that we had, the rain and the really storm that just went through, and the difficulties it caused a lot of places. Because this is something we don't get credit for, and it's a little irritating when I see one of these go through. DPW did a magnificent job of doing what they had to do for recovery. They truly did. But the people who did the magnificent job before DPW, with the engineers that designed the stormwater systems, the drainage systems for the city, of how to handle a deluge of water like that when it comes. Because I want you to keep the little comparative, little damage that we had with what happened up in Houghton just five or six years ago, where Houghton historically has not put money into that. They have not put money into planning drainage, doing the non-glorious side of civil engineering. I learned as an old engineer officer that, number one, when you're talking, any engineer application, it's drainage. Number one, there's nothing better than that, nothing more important than that. And this is a good example of that. The city of Marquette was arguably prepared for it. We came through it arguably much less beat up than other communities would have been. So, I want to make sure they get the credit for what they've been doing in the shadows, quietly in the office, and doing the planning and doing the execution of something that is absolutely non-glorious, but pays the dividends. So, thank you to our city manager for making sure those things continue to happen. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanley?
Perfect. I do want to echo what all the other commissioners have said, which is, it was nice to see the debate that we had over this parcel. It showed exactly what we see in the city, which is a lot of opinions, and it's always nice to come into it. Am I thrilled with the outcome? Probably not. But I also will support this in any way, because now, as it's our decision, it's time to move forward and make it the best that we can for our citizens as we go forward. I'm excited to work with Barry and see what the development comes to be. And other than that, I hope everyone has a great week. It is Innovation Week over at Northern this week, and I'm excited to go be a part of that. I know we had a proclamation about it in our agenda today, in our consent agenda. And I went to it for a little bit today for the opening, and it looks like it's going to be an amazing, amazing event. So, I'm excited to see what we get to go through for the next couple of days.
I'm just going to add with this. You know, the development we, our intent to sell resolution we had tonight, I was kind of on the fence with this since the beginning of it. I've been leaning more towards voting in favor of it most of that time, but recognizing that when I finally had a chance to speak, it sounded more like a three to three, and that I was really going to have to pick a side of that fence. You know, it's tough sometimes with these topics, but we're still going to have to vote on this again following negotiations, which I wish you the best of luck in. Our staff are pretty good at those. But I would like to remind everyone, though, that the final vote will require five votes. So, I would just keep that in mind going into the negotiation process. With that, I'm going to throw it over to our city manager.
Nothing more to add, other than, in addition to Public Works, we also had an election that, that week, and kudos to our election workers and the staff within our city clerk's office, who, some of them actually had to make accommodations to stay locally in town to make sure that they can get here safely and actually get here, because the roads outside of the city were less than ideal. So, there's a lot of dedication for our staff in the city, Public Works and, and public safety, and also our employees here at City Hall and our election workers. So, kudos to them, and that's all. Thank you.
Okay. And with that, the time is 7:24, and we are adjourned.